Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Krapp.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, or reports, do we have any? Okay, adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Public participation, this is the time you may address this body, all we ask is that you give us your name, your residential address, and that you adhere to our three-minute rule. Mics open.
Mickey Weiss, 18-200 Terra Drive, Clinton Township, Mount Clemens Downtown Development Authority. I first want to start off by thanking everyone who came to or helped us in any way with our Halloween Spooktacular. It was an incredible weekend. The Optimists Club used the new parking structure and had their first trunk-or-treat, and they guesstimated about 3,000 people went through. We were fortunate enough to have the Children's Hands-on Museum, had a museum without walls at 70 McComb Place, and they clicked and had a little over 2,400 people go through and see the exhibits that they had. It was wonderful, the weather was great, we had a lot of participation with the Mount Clemens Lions, Kiwanis Club, Optimists, we had churches involved, it was a wonderful event. We guesstimate around 5,000 people came and had a wonderful time in our downtown, used our restaurants, went into the stores, not just for candy, but it was a great weekend. So I want to thank anyone who did help us, there were so many people that stepped up to help us move bales of straw, there weren't so many to help us do the corn stocks, but it's always my pleasure to put those up, I think it's important that our city looks like we care. And I can't believe I'm going to now segue into Christmas, but believe it or not, the Christmas Open House is coming up a week from this Friday on November 18th, from 5:00 until 9:00. The First Presbyterian Church has Master III Arts Academy Show Choir, will start off at 5:00 PM at the Fountain Stage. We will have Santa will arrive at 6:00 PM, and the mayor will honor him with the key to our city. We have, again, been able to use Articraft, which is the old Articraft, 70 McComb Place, for a warming center for the evening. We'll have magic shows, meet and greet characters, we'll have a life-size Candyland game, face painting, family activities and crafts for the kids. We'll do the free horse-drawn carriage rides as soon as we get Santa settled over for the photos. We'll have a kid's optical course in there. We'll have the strolling Victorian carolers throughout the downtown. There'll be refreshments and raffles in the different businesses. If you have an opportunity, please come down.
Will you just repeat the date, please?
The date is Friday, November 18th.
Thank you.
From 5:00 until 9:00. I also want to remind everyone, the next day is our 41st Annual McComb County Santa Parade. We still need volunteers, if there's anyone that would like to help us out on Saturday morning, please contact City Hall, or you can contact my office as well. My number is (586) 469-4168, and the parade is (469) 416-
Three, no, (469), the same as the City Hall.
(469) 691-18. Extension 325. So please, if you have any time to spare, please come out and help us, it's a wonderful event. Again, we have over 100 different units in the parade, we have marching bands more than we've had in the past. Our grand marshal this year will be Chelsea Cavill from the WNIC radio station, she is Jay Towers' sidekick, so we're very excited to have her. Our commercials started today on WNIC, please tune in your radio, starting today, running all the way through the parade, we have commercials for not only our Christmas Open House, but the Santa Parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. Not to put a damper on anything, but as you know, I live on Bain and Robertson. I'm here to complain about the parking from the post office. It has gotten so to where we can't even utilize the street anymore. They park from northbound Grashit on Clinton River Drive all the way to Meadow. They park from the middle of Bain Street between Robertson and Clinton River Drive all the way to the apartment houses, and then that little street by the apartments up. It's not only impacting the neighborhood, it's impacting the apartment complex as well. Why should I have to go out of my way to go out of my neighborhood because I can't get through? Our streets haven't been done, you know, they weren't swept. Emergency vehicles have a difficult time going through there. In fact, the fire engine came the other day, and he had to literally slow down to try to squeeze through there. I understand they have to have somebody somewhere to park, but this is our neighborhood, not an all-day parking lot. And when you impact the process, we've been trying to work on it, and he's given some, you know, instances where, well, if we put parking on one side of the street, guess who's going to be on the other side of the street? And guess who's being impacted again? The neighborhood. We're not able to use the streets. Same way on Meadow Street, that was tried. Half of Meadow Street you can't even park on, from Clinton River Drive to half of that street. You can't park because the sign says "No Parking." But guess what? At northbound Grashit and Clinton River Drive, the signs are there that says "No Parking." But who adheres to it? They don't, and they're not being ticketed for it. They choose to turn their heads because it's the post office or whatever. Enough is enough. Winter is coming. I'm sure we're going to get snow, but who's going to do the streets? They're not going to be done. They come in around 7:30 in the morning, and guess what? They don't leave out of there till 7:30, 8 o'clock at night. And it's not fair to the community to have to have streets that we can't use, that we're paying taxes for. And hopefully, we can come together with the post office and whatever to find them someplace to park. You've tried it before, they chose not to adhere to it. You know, parking where the farmer's market was, and you would bust them in. They chose not to do it. But impacting the community is not an option. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Tierpka, 54, Dorothea. What I'd like to discuss is about the sidewalks, you know, on my street where I live, not in front of my house, but a couple doors down on 60 Dorothea, I almost tripped and fell, and I could hurt myself bad. There's a hump on there, just like the one I mentioned a few times, over on Elizabeth and Madison. And if I see anybody, I always tell them, "Please watch your step." For the last thing I would like for, I would want to see is anyone, or hear that anyone got hurt or severely injured, that they had to go to the hospital. And another place that's not even on my street is when I was walking, taking a walk with my personal trainer from the Y, I noticed in front of, not exactly, let me see, yeah, it was over in front of that one hotel across the street from the Y. Changed names so much, I can't remember, but there's some bumpy sidewalks around there too. Just for everyone's safety, I just hope, and I know that could take a while for that to be repaired, and there had been X marked at the one on Elizabeth for a while, I just hope to see something done before somebody hurts themselves, scrapes herself, or just seriously injured. And last but not least, I know we all are clear on this, don't complain about the election if you didn't vote. I heard Ruthie talk last time because I was watching this on TV, because I wasn't able to be here, is we all have a chance to vote, part of our freedom of being American, just like the Psalm "God Bless the USA," and they mentioned the guy that died and gave that right to us. He sure did, and so we all have a chance. If everyone gets out and votes, no matter how the election, this election turns out, they can at least say that they had an input, that they at least tried. But if they didn't vote, don't complain about whoever is picked, not just for the president, but for any other office, like county and state, or local one. So I just hope everyone takes advantage of their chances tomorrow.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dolores Kessany, Act 250 Euclid, Mount Clemens. I'm here because Saturday, the Girl Scouts are going to be picking up bags if they drop enough at your house for food for their hunger, and I wish somebody, I wish all of you would get something, even one item would help. The Girl Scouts have been in the organization, I think, at least 75 or 80 years, and they do a lot of good. I was in the Scouts, in fact, I went to the rank of senior, got my gold medal, didn't think of nothing of it until I got married, and you wouldn't believe the training you had in Girl Scouts that you remember when you get married. I remember a few years ago, we went to the Thanksgiving Parade in downtown Detroit, and my son was home, and he says, "We got a problem, he said the hot water tank busted." I said, "Okay." Meanwhile, I always buy bottled water, and I keep emergency water in empty bleach and soap gallons for washing and flushing down the toilet. So my son-in-law says, "Oh, we're going to have dinner at our house." I says, "No, Chuck, everything is cooked, I'm ready." And he kept insisting, and I said, "No, I cooked everything," because I knew we were coming to the parade today, "I have drinking water and washing water." And he kept insisting. Now, my son-in-law is Polish, he's got a hard head sometimes, but I'm Italian, I got a harder head yet. And my daughter finally says, "Stop, my mother was a scout, she's always prepared." And you are, you don't think of this, but you automatically. So help the Girl Scouts, and also I have to brag that my grandson became Arrow Scout two years ago, Eagle dies, and I think there's only 4% a year that they pick, that qualify for this. So help out the Scouts, even if it's one can. So no glass jars, no perishable foods, and nothing frozen. And if you can't, put a couple dollars in the bag. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I need, let's see, administrative responses to issues and questions raised during the previous meeting.
A resident suggested that the city commission minutes were deficient in that they failed to provide detailed information regarding agenda item discussions. The Open Meetings Act requires that public bodies keep minutes of each meeting, and the requirements for the same are the date, time, place, members present, members absent, any decisions made, and all roll call votes. Similarly, City Charter 10.127, Section 5, provides that a summary of proceedings be maintained and published. There is no authority requiring the city to provide more information than that currently provided in its minutes, and to do so would incur prohibitive publication costs. Anyone interested in reviewing commission meetings in their entirety may do so by viewing videotapes maintained by the city.
Are there any questions on the board? Pardon me? I just asked if there's any questions on the board. Okay, thank you. Approval of the minutes from previous meetings?
Move to approve the minutes of our previous meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, general business, 9A, public hearing of the downtown maintenance program. I need a motion?
I guess before you do that-
To open the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Before we do that, I think there was a special meeting that we had.
That was included in the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, includes them all.
That's what she was going to meet with, so, all right, we're good.
Okay, so I need to open public hearing, I need a motion.
Motion to open the first public hearing for the downtown maintenance program.
Support.
Roll call.
Ford.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes. First public hearing of the downtown maintenance program. The enclosed map indicates primary and secondary streets. Also enclosed is a determination of assessment that was submitted by the Downtown Development Maintenance Committee when the program was first initiated. The project 2016 and 2017 expense is $54,900. A primary rate of $9.24 and a secondary rate of $4.23 will generate a total assessment of $54,900. Are there any questions? This is for the public. Anybody has any thing to say?
Rick Block, 207 Cambridge. Is there something in writing somewhere that we can see what the program is, what the details of this program are? I looked around the website and scouted around here and there and went to different places, but I didn't find anything. I read the attachment that you just read, that's online, but I didn't see anything that says, "This is what we're going to do," or "This is what the details of this downtown cleanup program, maintenance program is." Is that somewhere where that's visible?
I will leave that up to the, to either one of you, or we can answer next time?
Well, it's been, I believe-
It's a resolution.
It's been a resolution that's 30-some years old, and it was brought about because the downtown merchants came to the city and requested that the city provide this service. It was more efficient and also more thorough than them doing it individually.
I guess my question is, what is the service?
The service is they clean the streets, they got a sweeper out there every morning that sweeps the streets, they do-
Snow removals. Pick up the garbage, right, pick up the garbage bags.
Can Mickey, she-
Mickey Weiss, 18-200 Terra Drive, Clinton Township, Mount Clemens, DDA. I happened to be in business at the time when we started this, the problem was we did not have enough time during the day for us to take care of the streets and our sidewalks in our downtown. And just so the residents are clear, that is paid for by the individual business through our rent, and it's always been that way, so it is not an expense to the city. The landlords, if their buildings are not rented, of course, they're paying that fee, but in most instances, it is paid for by the business.
Well, I can tell you, I have a breakdown here. The salary and wages for the work to be done is $19,400. Road maintenance material is $7,600, and the construction, contractual services, which is snow removal and mall cleaning, is $33,000.
Yeah, I saw that, I'm curious, but what do they do?
That's what they do.
That's what they do, they clean the streets and they remove the snow. I don't know what else you're looking for. Are there any other questions from the public? Dolores, come to the mic, please.
Is this only, is this only for the downtown area or the surrounding businesses, like on Grovesback and Cass?
It's just a downtown, it's a special assessment that the downtown put onto themselves.
Because I just happened to be in my veterinarian, and he was telling me that they don't clean their area, and I said, "Well, it's the city." He says, "No, we have to clean our own."
Right.
So I thought, "Okay, it's just a downtown area."
Downtown area.
Because those businesses in the downtown are paying extra to have-
To have it done.
-this service done. So the businesses outside of that area don't pay this fee, so they don't receive the services.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close the first public hearing, adopt rates, instruct the assessor to prepare special assessment role, and set the date for second public hearing on November 21st, 2016.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, or does anybody here have any comments? Roll call.
Hill.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Okay, 9B, request approval of the reallocation of the Community Block Grant funds for fiscal year 2016. I need a motion.
Move to approve the recommended reallocation of CDBG funds for fiscal year 2016.
Second. Okay. The City of Mount Clemens received an allegation of $59,633 in CDBG funding for 2016 fiscal year. The public, a public hearing was held on October 7th, 2016. Staff proposes the reallocation of the funds as outlined in the table below. Project title is Clearance and Demolition, Department by Community Development. Projected date of funding available July 1, 2016. Amount requested $59,633. The funds must be spent by December 31st, 2017. Questions? Comments? Commissioner Mensah.
Does this mean that the homes that we talked about for demolition will be demolished before that date, December 31st, 2017?
I hope so.
Advance the plan, yes, much sooner than that.
That is just awesome. And so, can you refresh people's memory what the four homes are?
Well, at this point, it's probably just going to be three, three city-owned properties at 12 Murdoch, and then the ones we recently acquired at 127 Court and 88 Gibbs. So I think the intent would be, depending on the weather, you know, if it's a bad winter, it might not be until the spring, but much sooner than the end of 2017.
I think that's very good news.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Most definitely, yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Okay, 9C, request approval of the Water System Capital Improvement Plan from F&amp;V Operations. Need a motion?
I move to approve the final capital improvement plan as presented from F&amp;V Operations for submission to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality.
One.
Okay. At the City Commission meeting of July 18th, 2016, the Commission approved a draft of the Water System Capital Improvement Plan submitted by F&amp;V Operations, as requested by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. A revision to the Michigan Safe Drinking Act, Water Act, 197 PA 399 mandated that all publicly-owned water supplies are required to assemble and submit a capital improvement plan identifying a five-year, a 20-year need of the water system. In the following guidelines for approval, the Commission reviewed and discussed the possible funding source for the plant at the work session of September 26, 2016. As a result of these meetings, attached is the final plan for your approval. Questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Okay, 9D, approve purchase and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Commissioner Mensah.
Two things, one thing real quick, the following page that has the bid bidder for Motor City Electric Technologies, can we make sure that that says Linda Kunith in the future? Because she is our finance director. I guess it says our previous one. I think Linda should have credit for that. And second?
No.
Do you see it?
Yeah.
But that's a copy.
Yeah.
From December 17th, 2013. That's the original bid.
Okay, well, and then I have a question about the dates in the extension agreement. It said that, you know, the contract started on January 13th, 2014, was for one year, and then we had two one-year extensions. So in the third whereas, it says "and expired" January 12th, 2016. Wouldn't that be 2017? Because the first year would be 13 to 14? I'm sorry.
14 to 15.
14 to 15, 15 to 16. And 16 to 17.
No, that's what we're starting with, that's what the extension is, is going to be from 17 to expired-
7th day of November.
Is an additional term from November 7th of this year. One year, an additional one year.
So we've been expired since January 12?
It's been expired since January 12th of 2016.
Okay.
And it's my understanding, this is annually about a five-year, about $5,000 contract is what is expended.
I just wasn't clear on the dates, especially if we had expired in 16, you know, or in January of 16. I'm good.
Anyone else?
And these, this is in addition to F&amp;V, they don't do this type of service? Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Motion on the consent agenda, please.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
One.
Roll call.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Okay, city managers report.
A special city commission meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, November 17th, 2016, at 5:30 PM to interview candidates for the position of city manager. The general election is Tuesday, November 8th, which is tomorrow. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. Please contact the city clerk's office at (586) 469-6818, extension 310, to confirm your voter's registration or for information on your voting location. A reminder that city offices will be closed on Friday, November 11th, 2016, in observance of Veterans Day. Please be advised that trash pickup will run on schedule. City administration is requesting that residents do not blow or rake leaves into the street. The city sanitation contractor will continue to pick up leaves and yard waste in brown paper-leaf bags or loose in 25- to 32-gallon containers marked "yard waste" or "compost" until December 9th, 2016. Reminder that the Mount Clemens Goodfellows will be holding registration for the No Child Without a Christmas program this Thursday, November 10th, from 9:00 AM until 6:00 PM, and Friday, November 11th, from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM, at the Family Life Center located at First Presbyterian Church, 168 Cass Avenue. For more information or to make a donation, please contact (586) 468-7814.
Any questions? City managers report. Seeing none.
I just wanted to say good luck tomorrow.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that for the last 11 years, I've been keeping count on how many kids I have for Halloween, so I know how much to buy for the following, next year. So this year, I had 277 kids, which is the most I've ever had, and it's the first time I've went over 200. And of all those kids, only, I would say, a dozen were older. All the other kids were little, they were very well-mannered, very friendly. It was a very enjoyable night, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hill?
I just want to tell people about the Christmas Walk, which will take place on December 8th, it's a Thursday evening. The tours will run between 5:30 and 7:30 every 15 minutes, and the walk is going to be on one of Mount Clemens' nicest streets, so I hope a lot of people will attend. I've had a few calls about it from people who were not able to get tickets last year because it sold out. So don't wait too long to buy your tickets. The tickets are now on sale at the Mount Clemens Public Library, and they are $18 per person. So I hope to see a lot of people there.
Is that a self-guiding tour, or do you have buses, or?[1798.52]
The buses will take people from the Presbyterian Family Center to the street where the walk is, and there will be bus guides accompanying the people on the tour. So, yeah, thanks for asking. I forgot to mention that.
Okay, thank you. Is that it? Oh.
I don't know what Mickey's saying to me.
Oh, okay.
I'll talk to you later.
Just wondering if the camera wasn't pointing or something. Commissioner Crapp?
I'd like to say thank you to the DDA and the Optimist. My two trick-or-treaters highly enjoyed the trunk-or-treat in the new parking structure, and spooktacular. We had a great, we had beautiful weather, and so whoever ordered that, great job.
I always take credit for the weather.
Yeah, good, good.
It's good.
It was a beautiful day, and it was very well-organized, and both events were great. I hope that, on that note, everyone gets a chance to enjoy the Christmas open house and the Santa Parade. I'm looking forward to both. My boys always enjoy, I can't say they enjoy Christmas shopping, but they do enjoy the Santa Parade. I hope that we can address the post office parking issue. I feel as though there are a couple of issues that we can address with the post office, including their lack of maintenance on their landscaping, which I've mentioned, I don't know, 100 times, and pulling their weeds. And I think the parking is just a lack of respect for the neighborhood, and I think we should all try harder to be good neighbors to each other, so. I also have an update on my coffee talk. I moved it this month to Wednesday, which is unusual, usually I have Tuesday and Saturday mornings, but I'm needing to move it to Wednesday, the 16th, at 9:30 at John's Family Grill. So, hopefully, everyone can attend. And the 19th, which is Saturday morning, so if you work on Tuesday, or on Wednesday, geez, I'm confusing myself, on Wednesday, if you work, I am happy to see everyone on Saturday morning, so. 9:30, John's Family Grill.
That's the parade.
Oh.
That's the parade, so I don't know how you're gonna split yourself.
I don't know. I'm not going to. Okay, I'm taking it back. We'll have to cancel Saturday. Come to the parade. So, we'll be there on the 16th. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah?
This Friday is Veterans Day. Please take the opportunity to thank a veteran for their service and their sacrifice, and their families for the sacrifice. And as Ms. Teripkov said earlier, you can thank our soldiers who died to give us the right to vote. And of course, we're all gonna go to the polls and vote tomorrow if you didn't vote absentee. People have been fighting for the right to vote in this country for years. Black people have been fighting for the right to vote, and women since 1920 have fought for the right to vote. So, please exercise your vote and your right tomorrow. I want to say happy birthday to the Faygo Company. They are now 109 years old. The Faygo Company is kind of special in our family. My grandfather emigrated here from Pennsylvania in the early 1950s, and the first job that he got was as a driver for Faygo. So, rock and rye and Red Pop are real popular at our house. So, happy birthday, Faygo, a staple of Detroit and of Macomb County. I want to remind you that, you know, the holidays are coming up. We heard about the Goodfellows in the city manager's report, but Meals on Wheels could really use some volunteers this holiday season. So, if you've got some time to deliver just like 10 to 12 meals, a couple days, it would be really helpful to the Macomb Community Action. And if you want to volunteer, you can get ahold of them at the Reculium Building, or you can call 469-5228, or you can get ahold of me, and I'll hook you up with them. Meals on Wheels is for, you know, our seniors and handicapped residents, so if you have some time, please, please think about volunteering. And that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton?
I, too, would like to encourage everybody that hasn't already voted absentee to please go out and vote tomorrow. I've spoken to several people, and they tell me that they don't like either of the candidates. But then, if that's the case, then you must pick the best of the worst and then go out and vote. But you must go out and vote. Your future depends upon it. I would also like to thank the community for their participation in the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families Drug Takeback Event this past October 22nd. This event was held in conjunction with the National Drug Takeback Effort by the DEA. We were able to triple our last effort to get unused and expired drugs out of the homes and out of the hands of unintended users. You can join our effort by attending our meetings, which will be at the Mount Clemens High School, and it will take place on November 30th at 3:00 PM. This will be an effort to help to make Mount Clemens a better place for youth and families. And again, we'd like to thank the community for making our effort a great success. I'd also like to say congratulations to those who have served in the military of our great nation. Happy Veterans Day to each of you. Your sacrifice and that of your comrades in arms have kept our great nation safe, both abroad and at home. And we say thanks again. And I guess, I had an uncle that died in World War II, and I never got a chance to meet him. And he was quite a musician, and that's probably was my last chance to learn how to sing and be a musician, be musically inclined. So, I miss that and missed him. But all those who, all those who served our country, we definitely are thankful for that. Commissioner Wisdom, forth the night. All right. Smart is when you believe only half of what you hear. In this political time, it's probably a good thing. But brilliant is when you know which half to believe. Think about that one. And with that, we'll say goodnight.
Commissioner Ford?
Ruthie, the main reason that the post office parks in the neighborhood is free parking. They do not have to pay. And that should be looked into. Second one is, the house on northbound Walnut, has that been tore down yet? Or does it still have the tarp on top?
Northbound Walnut.
It's still there.
Where about?
It's still there.
The tarp is still on the house?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a house that needs to be tore down.
Is it privately owned?
Um, I really don't know right now.
We'll have to look into it and see.
It was the one that has the tarp on it that the resident complained about.
Oh, okay.
The tarp is still there, and the house has fallen down.
Okay.
The resident came here.
Yes, I remember that. We'll have to check into it and see what the status of it is, you know, the owner and that.
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Just a couple things. As Mickey had mentioned, the parade is the 19th. We're still looking for volunteers just for that day. If you can give us a couple hours, we greatly appreciate it. I'm kind of excited this year. We have five bands, which we have not had that many bands before. And we also, I'm hoping, and I'm kind of looking back there at North Broadway Church of Christ, the choir may be singing before the parade starts on the stage. I'm waiting for confirmation. I think they have a meeting tonight. Okay, so I'll get confirmation, but that'd be really great. From probably 9 o'clock until they can see the parade coming down, they'll be on the stage, and they'll be singing both Christmas and gospel songs. So, I'm hoping that comes to fruition, because I think that'd be great to keep everybody entertained for a while down there. And, let's see what else. I have something else. Oh, parking. This year, we're also, the county is allowing us to use the parking structure. They're a new parking structure for parking.